Oh, that's fine.
All right. We'll call the meeting to order at 5:30. Thank you Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
No problem.
And it is 17:30. There's two things on the agenda.
And one, option for the legal.
And the legal thing. Do we have any of the contract from Nathan? Do we have...
To explain to different options and you guys can decide which ones.
Okay, so the first thing on the agenda is the... or is it the second thing? The first thing is Nwac.
Would you prefer to...
I'm gonna make an agenda change. The Chair's gonna arbitrarily make an agenda change if there's no objections. And that is to do the legal thing first and then we'll move into the Nwac thing.
No objections.
Commissioner Pierce?
No objections.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
No, no objections.
Commissioner Shingleton?
All good.
All right, let's do it.
Okay, so our attorney that we use in Oak Harbor, Nathan Manny, moved on to other things. His father and I spoke and his father, Kenneth Manny, is up to speed on everything that Nathan did for us previously. When I looked around at some of the other law firms that we have in town, they wanted... the pricing was similar to what Cohen Manny, Tuney and Manny put forward as pricing for us. The one exception being that every place but this one did not offer the option of an hourly versus a monthly retainer. Also, that Manny is up to speed on everything that has happened with the district previously. He does not have to be briefed and spend a lot of hours trying to transfer files over to them. It is my recommendation, at least, that we would go with staying with Cohen Manny, Tuney and Manny. They send over a contract. They have two options. The first option is the monthly retainer option, which would guarantee the exclusivity of Cohen, Manny, Tuney and Manny to the district. They would not be able to, for example, if there were a lawsuit brought forward against the district and the person bringing that lawsuit for injury or something like that could go to them. If we were on the hourly option and we would not have their exclusive representation, they would be able to take that person if we were just on an hourly-as-needed basis. However, if we don't feel that we would want to have them retained exclusively, we can use them for the hourly option for things that we have used them for in the past, such as contract review for contracted employees, et cetera. Their retainer fee would be $600 a month. And then that would include two hours of work to be done in a month. After that, it would be $300 an hour. The as-needed basis would be only as we need them. It would not include the monthly retainer and the cost per hour is still the same. What we had done with Nathan Manny is we have done the hourly option, the as-needed hourly option with him, opting not to pay the retainer due to the high cost. What they have done is they have sent over a contract for the hourly. If that's what we decide to do, then it does need to be signed by the board. If we decide to do the exclusive representation, then we would need to ask them to resend a contract for that. What we had done with Nathan in the past was just the as-needed hourly.
And so, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So, the, if you will, only benefit is the exclusivity of the contract. Is that accurate?
The hourly rate is the same regardless.
Okay.
And in the past, what we've done, because we don't know how much we need them per year, is just done the hourly rate without the monthly retainer.
Correct.
So...
In some years, we've used them more than others.
And some months more than others.
Oh, yes.
Have we... has there... I assume there must have been a month that we didn't require them, but has that, in your time, have you ever... have we ever not done...
Yeah, there have been several months where we have used them.
Yeah, oh, okay.
There... I think Nathan and I spoke more toward the beginning of when I took over as acting and I just wanted to catch up on a few things that he had dealt with the previous year, so he and I did speak. And then I believe we used him when we were reviewing the swim coaches contract. Other than that, I don't know that we've used him that much.
And then, of course, the thing is, if we went with the exclusive and it was $600 a month...
Correct.
...a month, we did not use them, that time is not carried over to the next month.
That is correct.
Yeah, we can't... we can't... I don't see how we can commit that much money to something that we're not gonna use.
The district does have also the lawyers for the insurance company that we use.
That is correct.
So, as we've done in the past with Enduris, it gives us the opportunity to use the lawyers for the insurance company, plus Nathan Manny and Cohen.
Or Cohen.
Thank you, whatever. Steel second. But that's worked in the past, having both of those, and not having to worry about the $600 a month...
Correct.
...and the hourly on top.
If through our insurance company, we do have the exclusivity in our case of the CIDW attorneys should be at some point need them. When we come across things like the contract review and a few other minor things, it is nice to have the guy that's in town that can do them and who is specialized in this.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we retain Cohen, Manny, Tuney and Manny as our district attorney on the hourly basis.
One second.
Discussion?
It's kind of a no-brainer for me.
Me too.
No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Can I please have the contract?
The hourly... do we have the hourly one? Is... or do you say... oh, okay.
Yeah, we got the hourly.
They sent it to me already.
Okay.
Just give it to Commissioner Hoffmeyer, please. Thank you, ma'am.
Please sign where your name is.
Thank you, ma'am. That's what I thought.
Wait, what?
Say the fifth.
All day. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alan. You said that like a school mom and that was awesome.
Just making sure.
That's very good. I was gonna say, school mom.
I think that's what everyone wants to be called, school mom. I'm sure of it. Oh, wait. You can... yeah, I got you.
While he's signing that, I hope everyone had a good day today.
Please.
It's a beautiful day.
Awesome.
It's a beautiful day. Wonderful fall day.
We're complete with that. We'll move on to the Nwac. Before we start, I wanna recognize Ally, please. You wanna go ahead and introduce yourself and I'm gonna give you five minutes of time... or five to six minutes of time, if that'll work. All right, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Ally Paul. I'm a parent of an Enroc swimmer, chief of Wigglefish. We've been in the team since about the beginning of the school year. And Sean came and spoke to our parent meeting and talked about the need for the team to start looking future-forward and thinking about a booster in the club. And so, I held a meeting with John Self, with the parents of Enroc and discussed building that booster team. Currently, we actually have a majority in favor. We will be doing that. The team doesn't know yet because I wanted to wait till Saturday when we have the end of the vote for everyone who had given their two cents, but there's no one opposed to it at this point either. So, it's all been positive. And so, I first wanna ask you all if you can give me one word that you consider Nwac is to you. Do you have a word that Nwac means to you?
Competition.
Community.
I would go with team as well.
I'm gonna do like Donald Trump and give you one word, if that's actually two words.
Life-changing.
Yeah. Super. Well, we had... we asked the families this in our meeting and the words that came up are community, athleticism, connection, friendship, team-building, positive influence, work ethic, discipline, passion for swim, individuality, sportsmanship and integrity. And that's what we are hoping to build our booster club on. Those are the words we'll continue to point to board. We're gonna post them here so that any future members of the team will also see that. And so, one of the things we come to you today is to just talk about, we know that there is deficit at the pool. We don't wanna see the pool close its doors, nor do we wanna see it clamber, but we wanna see it become a community again. I hear about hardship and negative aspects. I read things in the paper that really makes me sad because I've been in this community for over 12 years, back and forth, we're a military family, and we just came back from being overseas. And anyway, now that our kids are more involved again, but they always took school lessons here, and I actually swam for myself while I was pregnant with them, and I hate to see such an asset to the community be lost. I also think it's really important living on an island that that's a skill set that we don't lose. But one of the things I come with is that we have a finite population. We are a wiby island and we won't get any bigger. And our income is not gonna get any greater. We don't have the jobs to support it. And unlike Anna Gordo's pool, they were able to reach out to neighboring communities off island and that they're starting to grow in from. And I've thought of all the different ways we could do that and we just don't have it. Unless we open up a varied way of salmon, I'm not sure where we're gonna get something like that. But with that said, I do believe we have a community here that exists, that it's gonna take manpower and positive connections to build the pool back up to what it used to be. And that's looking future-forward, not just at a two-year, three-year or six-year life, but at a 20-year, 30-year, 40-year future of community. And I think that as Nwac families, we can bring that to the pool because I think in volunteering and getting the kids out in the community and showing the positive nature of the pool, we're gonna recruit more. And soon, hopefully, we'll be back at that old capacity that used to be up there, that larger team that was here is double the size of what we are now. But there's a lot of negative out there and we want them to come back and we think they will. I've had phone calls from master swimmers that heard about our goals of becoming an Enroc booster and they supported. They really wanna do something, so I said, what about a community group as well? So, I'm not only talking for the Enroc booster, I'm talking about starting a 501(c)(3) booster for the community. I talked about maybe offering up as helpers to Oak Harbor Pool, we call H2O. And I've got several people in the community that had our money and wanted to sit on a startup board and start getting that going. So, I come with those two things. I think we don't need to raise costs, I think we need to raise community. That's my catchphrase for this because I think that's the positive nature moving forward. I don't think that we can support it financially if we just keep increasing the cost of whoever is here at the pool already. So, I just do that heartfelt message, but I am here to reach the same goals that you're all here, is to keep the facility going. And I think the Nwac... the Nwac booster will support Nwac all the way and we want to help do all the things we can for the kids educationally and as in the team sport, but I'm not sure that we can financially support cost of the pool in that sense because I don't think that's what a team booster is. But I do think a community booster can be bricks and mortar campaigns for capital campaigns or drawing that community in, doing recruitment on that level as well. There's lots of business aspects. And I also have some other things to bring to the board, which would be looking at federal impact aid, like the schools lack on that. Hospitals are gonna need that. The bases is closing more and more of their structure and basing it out to the community, but not giving the funding forward. And I think that's something we need to ask for hard in the community, looking at writing letters to congressmen because that's the way to enact that and we can get quick federal funding, actually, if we have some of the ready backing. So, that's some of it. And then looking at other entities that utilize the pool and addressing new ways that we can look at a business plan. So, not just nonprofit, but business future-forward, so I'm happy to be a contact for that. So, thanks for the cover, regardless I was.
Thank you very much. All right, and with that in mind, we'll move forward with the Nwac program proposal. Commissioner Shingleton?
You betcha. All right, so hopefully, everyone who is interested has... there are some handouts. I put them in the chair right back there. Sorry, I didn't give appropriate signage. And I also apologize that I wasn't able to get this out sooner. It certainly would've loved to, but here it is. And so, just to talk through what's... well, so to back up for a moment, since some folks are here for the first time, and just as a reminder for everybody else, so the exercise was to go through, the proposal that we talked about was, okay, so, option three. But basically, it's raise fees to cover additional program costs and then try to, you know, obligate parents to additional costs, but that the expectation would be that for the year 2016, that we would still be running the program. And so, this is all program-specific. It's not for the facility, it's for the program only. But that we would still be expecting to run the program at a deficit for next year, but that we would expect to balance it as we are looking at doing for all programs by 2017. So, that's the... that was the goal. And so, what I did, so the original numbers that we talked about at our regular meeting last month was 85%. And so, I did a bunch of calculations, so hopefully, don't... there's a lot on here and I recognize that, but I was trying to kind of show you different levels of contribution. So, to start at the top, and hopefully, it's large enough for everyone... yeah, I know, I did say that for you, Sean. But the projected expenses for 2016, for simply for the program alone, are $70,137. And so, what I did was I took out of this number, the pass-through revenue for things like meat fees, PNS registration, et cetera. And so, that takes out another $10,000 and then swim meat revenue, which I know in our proposed budget was estimated at $6,000, but since we adjusted down this year to $2,000, I went with, or since that's our expectation for the time being, I went with $2,000. So, that leaves an outstanding program cost of just over $58,000. I realize you can all read, but I wanna make sure that it's making sense.
If you could, please.
Sure.
$70,137, can you break that out, please? As far as the coaches' salaries, $47,000. And just so people know.
I don't...
Do you know?
I don't, actually. I don't have all the detail with me. His is $47,000 plus sick pay, plus vacation, plus benefits. And then there are, I mean, it's merchandise, it's... there's a big other category that we're in the process of clearing up. But there are lots of... I went with what's in the budget. What's up?
Travel.
Travel's $3,000.
Well, I just wanted, you know, for it to be explained, if that way, if anyone's listening, they have an idea.
And it's all I could... so, for reference, it would be go back to, let's see, October and September meetings. There's more detail in the handouts as well as in the discussion.
Thank you.
So, no, no, that's great. I appreciate that.
Because honestly, do you believe there would be some confusion with some people if they saw that?
Sure.
So, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. And that is actually, that number is in keeping with... I wanted to bog myself down with not bringing too many pieces of paper. Unfortunately, I think I may have brought too few. But the total expenses for 2014 were $76,000. So, it is certainly in line with that, if that's helpful. All right, so, the... and this was me, lack of a better verb, so I apologize, but spitballing. And this is... and so, proposed fundraising obligation, and I put $12,000. I don't know, you know, Ally and other parents, I don't know if that sounds like, hey, that's no big deal, or are you kidding me? I have no idea. I was trying to... I was really trying to throw something out there that had a positive impact for the program. So, is that realistic? Of course, I think it is. I don't know if your expectations are different, and I would love to have that discussion if it makes sense. Because the other thing we don't... I mean, this is not a... the goal here is not to, hey, we're going to say that this is what you're going to do, you know, like that, there's absolutely... there's no way of that happening. We had, just to back up a little bit, you know, last year, and I'm saying this for Ally or anybody else who isn't familiar, last year, we... one of the things that we did for the 2015 budget was the revenues were completely out of whack. So, I think everyone on this board is really sensitive to, we're not trying to put numbers out there that don't make any sense. We want them to be meaningful and we want them to be achievable. So, that being said, I put $12,000 on there and that would basically leave program costs to cover at $46,137. What I did was, so based on the 85% that we talked about, I kind of threw some numbers around. And so, you kind of start on the left... oh, and by the way, here's what I did. So, I assumed an average of 40 swimmers. And based on our current model, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, I went with 40. If that... if anyone thinks that's a terrible assumption, that is fine. We can certainly always adjust it, but that's what I went with, thinking that that probably was about an accurate average. The other thing, so if you look down the... on the left-hand side, each one of the different levels, and I made, again, I had to make assumptions because that's kind of what we have to do. And so, based on a certain number of members in each group. And so, for example, for platinum members, for junior members, right? And so, these are costs, or rather, these are revenue projections based on the number... this number of members in each level, sorry. And so, for example, when you see silver at six, silver and the high school program, the high school prep, I should've put that, but the high school prep program are the same cost, so that would be a total of six. So, when, for example, Wigglefish 1 and Wigglefish 2, that would be 20. So, out of 40, the assumption here would be that half of those people are in Wigglefish 1 and Wigglefish 2, if that's helpful to explain it. I'm just trying to make sure that people can follow along with where I'm going here. And so, what I did was, so we talked about 85%. And looking at these numbers, at the very... at the top of each one of these columns, you'll see a percentage, and that is really the percentage of program costs that would be covered. I... if there was a... if there was an easy way for me to do this, I promise you, I would've done it that way. I just couldn't figure it out. So, there's a lot of numbers here. I will... I can readily say that, you know, at the 83%, Wigglefish 1, Wigglefish 2 at $86 a month isn't feasible. It also, one of the previous proposals that we had discussed, the numbers were in that same range. I believe it was 90, but... and we rejected that. So, I kind of kept going to the right. Thank you. You know I have a problem with that, don't you?
Yes.
I kept going to the right and so, you can see the 79%, 77%, 74%, 69%. And by the way, here's the basis for these numbers. I realize this is exciting as all get out, but I just wanna explain the basis for them. So, if you see on the far-right column ratio, it's basically the relationship of the current numbers to one another. So, Wigglefish 1 and Wigglefish 2 are the least expensive part of the program and the platinum swimmers pay 1.98. So, basically, it's just making the relation and keeping that same relation. Does it have to be done that way? It doesn't, but it seemed to... my assumption is going to be that those ratios exist for a reason, so I would support carrying them forward. So, looking at that, so, looking at the 69% column, and I'll just go down all the way for it, but that would set a baseline of Wigglefish 1 and Wigglefish 2 at $70 a month. I had forgotten Masters, so that was a late add on my part, unless we believe that it's exempted from this, but I'm not sure why we would think it would be. And so, based on, again, those number of members and based on the baseline rate of $70 a month, these, you know, platinum, platinum 138, 138, 68, these numbers can be rounded if that's easier, but nonetheless, I was being precise. And so, that would be the monthly contribution based on 11 months. And it gives below it, so, the estimated monthly revenue and the estimated... oh, it says estimated dues revenue, and that would be annual. So, then, but then, based on the program cost of $58,137, the program balance would be a negative $17,922. And so, that's kind of where that $12,000 fundraising came into, to help offset that deficit. And if we did this in 2016, it would be at a cost to the district of almost $6,000. So, I realize that's a lot and I kind of wanna shut up a little bit so people can absorb it, but...
Thank you.
So, to a point that Commissioner Hoffmeyer had made previously about a travel budget, this would cover all other expenses, including travel, for one monthly amount. If we found that it was underfunded, I would say mid-year, we would need to determine what to do. I mean, you either cut something or you...
So, looking at...
Uh-huh, yes.
I'm sorry, my question...
That's okay.
Okay, so, looking at the proposal and looking at 69%, the revenue cost to district is $5,922.66, correct?
Correct.
If... 'cause one thing we can't factor in is time and what's gonna happen, when it happens and what's the community going to be able to do. That could possibly go as high as $17,922 if there's nothing...
If a booster club doesn't come forward.
And that would be... so, to your point, exactly, that would be the mid-year, let's call it assessment, that would be, okay, let's look at where we're at and see... I mean, unfortunately, this year, so this year, the problem that we ran into was, we were still fixing our budget.
Right.
Good, bad or indifferent.
Right.
We were still fixing our budget. And so, the focus was really on that as opposed to really reviewing the health of the programs, right? And so, in... I would recommend that regardless of how we proceed, that we have a mid-year review that says, you know, yeah, well, how are we doing?
Should do as a district, anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, right, there... yes, and so, to your point, not simply just for this program, right? But for all programs.
Right.
Absolutely. And in this case, it would be because the deficit has been so great. So, just to put it out there, the... so, since 2011, I mean, it is what it is, but since 2011 through August of 2015, the program deficit total has been almost $92,000. And...
For how many years?
For 2011 through August of 2015. So, we'll be more than likely bumping up close to $100,000.
And how does that compare to other programs?
Well, it has a higher... I mean, we've lost more...
No, I mean, my question there is, what other programs, how does that compare? You know, I'm just asking.
And I... while I understand that, it's, to me, it's not just an either-or.
Right.
It's a yes-and. I suppose part of how I look at it, whether this is narrow-sided or not, or, you know, near-sided, but is... well, I just... is we're looking at at least the initial, and I believe we have updates, but we're looking at the initial list from that, that had $1,000 to $200,000 worth of maintenance needs.
Yes.
And we... I'm certainly not saying that, you know, gee, we should've done this, we should've done that. It is what it is. But those are needs that... this is certainly not the only thing that would address that.
Right.
Right? But...
And we are looking at each program.
Absolutely.
So...
Absolutely. Yep.
Comments?
Well, you mentioned the travel account. Go ahead.
Oh, mine is, you didn't...
I'll come back to it.
I don't remember you talking about this. I did notice that there was $10,000 for the fundraising in the top, the 83% and 79%. Did you do that on purpose?
I did, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sorry.
But if you moved it back to the $12,000 for the 79%, then it would not be a loss. It would be...
It would be neutral.
Yeah.
No, true, true.
Even $177 in the black.
Well, it would be... Well, it would be $177 in the red, but it would still be, right, if you, $2,000, right, but it would be, it would be very close to revenue neutral.
Yeah.
Yes, agreed.
The reason I brought up the travel account, the way I did two months ago, whatever it was, is because one of the resounding things you hear in the community has to be, is this continuing where people feel that the taxpayer is paying for travel expenses, you know, for the head coach to go on trips, paying for hotels, paying for gas. And although that is true, this is a time when we can set that straight. We can have every swimmer, like I said, pay whatever figure we determine, and it goes into an account. This is the travel account. And that way, anybody in the community who looks at it can see that these parents are paying for the travel expenses themselves. This is a fund that is there for that purpose. When that money's expired, that money is expired. If you fall short, I'm sorry, coach, you can't go on this swim meet. If there's a surplus at the end of the year, it can roll over to the next year, and then one of two things can happen. If the number of kids increase, that can happen too, that you could reduce the amount we charge that goes into that travel account, or you could just keep rolling it over to where every year, every two, three, four years, whatever it allows, that coach is able to take those kids on a big trip. And we've done it before, we went to Gresham, Spokane, Vancouver, you know, it gives these kids a chance to kind of have big experiences. At the same time, I think these parents realize that, hey, we're paying for this. And then the taxpayer looks at it and they say, you know what, no longer is it, you know, I, the taxpayer, paying for their kids to go to swim meets and their coaches to go, because the thing I keep hearing over and over and over again, my kid's on the select soccer team, my kid's All-Star baseball, nobody pays for their coach to go anywhere. Why are we paying for the swim coach to go somewhere? This is that chance to separate that money, and to say, this money here, guess what, people, these parents are paying for that coach to travel with them. And I appreciate all the hard work you've done. The model I would like to support would be a 15% increase per swimmer and a $7.50 fee that would be marked for travel expenses. And I think that, if you look at it, we have about the same numbers, actually, as your 69% model. It just, it takes that money and it sets it aside, and it marks that this is what it's used for, and it takes that little target off of this team that so desperately needs that target to be off of at this time, so that is my thought.
I think the thing, Steve, is, and maybe you've done this, and maybe we just haven't seen it, but I feel like the 15% is arbitrary, and it doesn't show the bottom line.
It's funny, that 15%, though, and that $7.50 are right in line with your 69% model here. And I don't think anyone here is going to support more than that at this time personally.
But I would like to see then the numbers that, I would love to.
All right, Wigglefish one, if you, 15% increase, if you round it up to the nearest dollar, it's going to be $61, you add in that $7.50, $68.50 is what it's going to be. You have 70, correct? The silver, you have 80.57, the silver, 15% would take it to $70. The $7.50 would make it $77.50, pretty darn close. The gold, you have 95, a 10% increase would take it to 83. The $7.50 would take it to 90.50. The junior, you have 125, a 15% increase would take it to 110, would be 117.50. It falls off a little bit on the platinum, 121 would be a 15% increase, the $7.50 would take it up to 128.50. And I understand there's that big jump there on the platinum, but it is so important to keep these kids on that platinum engaged, because the only way this team is ever going to grow is if those platinum swimmers continue to swim, because that's the problem this team has now. Those platinum swimmers have dropped off, kids don't have anything to aspire to be like, and you don't have a lot of the peer coaching that this team so desperately needs, because the coach can't coach everyone. And even when Neil was here, the success was that peer coaching on Saturdays, it was so important. And I think that if we're not careful with the platinum kids, you know, it's hard to keep them anyway. And I think it's, you know, since we use them for peer coaching so much, I don't want to make it so impossible for them to swim that they just, they just fall out, because you're never going to grow at that point. And I think that that's the part I'm really looking at here, is this team right now needs to know that this board supports them, and I think that, I think we do, but if we make it to where they financially can't afford it right now, the booster club isn't even going to get off the ground, because they're all going to ditch and go somewhere else. And that's what I'm afraid of. And I do appreciate all the hard work, and I understand what you're saying, that you think that, you know, maybe I haven't followed your logic and the train of thought that you've been on, but as somebody who's been involved with this team over the course of the past eight years, I think that this 15% model, in addition to that, the $7.50 in the travel account is the way to go at this time. And working with these parents to really encourage you guys to set up a booster club, and that's how I feel, so.
So, do you have figures in terms of what that cost to the district would be?
Hold on, I'm getting there.
Okay, super, thank you.
What's, what did we say for silver there, Steve? I'm down to...
If you did a 15% increase right now, it would take silver to $70.
Silver, 70?
Yes.
Where'd I get 77 at?
I don't know, right now, silver, according to me, is, right now, silver is $61, right?
77.50, so it's 77.50 with the travel, thank you.
Yeah, with the travel, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The only problem I have with the travel amount is it doesn't, it doesn't cover known expenses, and I think, I think it would be much wiser to actually know that you're covering that.
That $7.50, if you have 50 swimmers on the team, which is where it's going to be.
Well, but...
Let me finish, please. That takes it up to $4,000, which is your traveling expenses for the year, if I believe.
Well, but the problem is, we've been down to 30 swimmers, and so it makes more sense to do exactly what you said, in terms of being conservative about it.
Yeah, well, and if you go with the 30 swimmers, you know, what do you end up with? You know...
$12 a month.
No, you end up with, no, that's not what I'm saying, then the coach doesn't travel past that amount of money. If you've got to drop two or three swim meets along the way, you know what, you've got to drop them. That's it, unless the parents want to, the booster club is up and running, and the booster club wants to kick in money for the coach to go on another swim meet. I mean, maybe they're only allowed to go on half the swim meets they're currently going on. When that money's gone, that money is gone.
Well...
No, excuse me, no, you may not, thank you very much.
The reason...
No, you didn't, and if it happens again, I'll clear the room.
So there's 42, well, 20, 26, 32, 36, there's 40 swimmers right now, right? There's Wigglefish 20, silver 6, 26, gold 32, junior 36, platinum 4.
So, Steve, if I may...
Okay, okay, go ahead.
This is, I didn't bring my crayons, so this is pretty close, it's going with the model that you came up with, it's $41,976 for the year.
May I ask the director a question, Mr. Chair?
Go for it.
How many kids are currently on EnWAC?
52.
52. So if there are 52, the 50 that I just said, that would give you $4,000 a year for traveling expenses, which would more than cover the traveling expenses for the year.
I don't know how that's mathematically possible, sorry, I'm not trying to, I don't know how that would be mathematically possible.
Well, since I did it real quick, it could probably be off, but I'm using the numbers that were here, so unless I add something more...
I meant to, would you be insulted if I...
No, somebody please check, yes.
No, if every one of them is lower, then it mathematically seems impossible.
Somebody please check.
It's okay, I got, I mean, I, I would love to know for sure, and I, if I come up with the same thing as you, I will wholeheartedly apologize.
No, you won't. That's why I'm trying to rush through it. So we have 52 swimmers total right now? And what was our lowest point this last year? Do you know off the top of your head? I know I'm asking a swag.
33 or 34.
33 or 34, and that was, I'm sure, during the summer?
There it is.
So, which is typically a low time, because people go away, and Coach has said that in past meetings, so 40 is actually not a bad average.
I think the, probably the real information that would be good to have is what?
How many months were we...
Well, actually, even just what's our current distribution, I mean, you're right.
Julie, do you know what our current distribution is?
Um, I know, I was trying to print it out, we were having some technical difficulties back there, but we currently have 19 between Wigglefish one and Wigglefish two.
Okay.
And then I think it's 12 on silver.
12 on silver, all right.
And I could not get that page with the gold and higher ones to print, so I do not have those.
While we're doing math, and somebody better than me at it, would you mind going and looking, please?
Did you multiply the numbers by 12?
Yes, I did.
That's the problem.
Oh, so you went by 11 instead of 12?
I did, I did.
So therein lies, for the record, therein lies the problem, I multiplied the numbers by 12, whereas Commissioner Singleton used the 11-month instead of 12-months, so I did 12.
Four annual comparison bases, I...
Nope, that was my bad, because I used 12, it was an easy number, which would make my numbers wrong, so if we add this...
Yeah, if you just divide by 12 and multiply by 11. There you go.
History major. It's just to hand it over sometimes.
38, 478.
And so, with a dues revenue of 38, 478, and included in that, as it is in this proposal, the travel expense, and, help me understand that, Steve, because I apologize, I was trying to quickly do math, which for me is not a quick exercise. The travel expense would be capped at, your proposal is capping the travel at?
$7.50 a month for 11 months per swimmer, if you have 50 kids, what's that, it ends up being just over $4,000, I believe.
So it's based on children?
It's...
Swimmers, I should say, right.
Well, like I said, if you go over that amount, it just basically goes into a kitty that continues over, and that next year, the board can, you know, it can decide, you know what, we've got X amount of money in there, you know, now the swimmer, instead of 50, there's 80, we're going to reduce that amount to $5. Or maybe what the parents really want to do is to continue to pay that $7.50, to where that money then goes towards a larger trip, or maybe there's more swim meets they go to. But that money would be marked, and the only reason I used the $4,000, because if I remember right, that's about what we paid in travel expense last year, wasn't it, $4,000?
That's about right.
And that's where the $7.50 came into play there. And anything more than that just becomes too expensive, I think, for people to even support. And I honestly think most parents would support this, because they understand that, you know, it's their child, and they want their kids to have their coaches with them at swim meets. And they don't expect the taxpayers to pay for their kid's swim coach to go to swim meets with them.
Given that model, then the program would run at a deficit of $19,659. And so, I, you know, I have, I have a hard time saying if they had more in travel, then they could roll it over, when we're talking about using revenue and taxpayer money to support that $20,000 deficit.
Then you could say at the end of the year, then the money gets kicked right back into North Wilby Park and Rec District, and I would support that, I really would, I mean, I have...
So if there's excess travel, it would...
If there's excess travel money...
It would roll into, cover the cost to the...
It would get kicked in to help offset the expenses of EnWAC, in any way it could.
Julie, do you have the rest of this, I'm sorry, Steve, were you finished?
No, that's good, thank you, and I understand that.
So it's nine gold, three junior, and five platinum. These numbers do not include, I believe it's four new swimmers, but I don't have them assisting yet, so they would not be on this list.
How many platinum?
She said platinum, five.
Five.
Gold, three, or junior, three?
Gold, nine, junior, three.
Silver, 12?
Yes.
How about Wigglefish?
It's 19 total.
How about masters?
Masters, I think we're running about six right now. We've had several new people come in and do tryouts and...
High school's on hiatus?
High school, yeah, he does not have a high school squad at all.
So six monthly payers, as opposed to, as opposed to a card?
For masters?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I believe so. And I do not think that those numbers include some of our girls that are only in the baskets right now, that will be coming back shortly.
They're on the swim team, the high school.
Just some information, Rick Larson is putting on at Town Hall meetings this month, here in, not Oak Harbor, but Anacortes on the 10th of November, 6:30 to 8:00, and then down in Clinton, Saturday, November 14th, 2:00 to 3:30. And Clinton is the Clinton Community Hall, and over in Anacortes is Anacortes City Hall. And I just got that there, so you may want to go over there and meet one of his representatives, and he's there to talk about other things, but as always, you can hide your, you know, One of my biggest things is, as far as with the $7.50, $5, $10, I don't care what it With me, as a taxpayer, as somebody, a parent, well, a parent, a kid that's not on the swim team, one thing is too old, but by having that there, it's showing some transparency to the community on what, on what, on the coaches' travel and stuff like that. And right now, as far as the government, all the way around, federal down to local here, I think transparency is one of the biggest things that we have to show. And, you know, if the $7.50 is something that we're going to look at, I think that's a good thing.
And these numbers that I proposed include that, to cover that, okay?
I understand that, but I'm saying it's separate, that's all I'm saying.
Sure, no, no, I understand, and I'm just trying to make sure that we understand that, you can break it out, you can break it out any way you want to.
I do understand that.
I mean, that's, and if that, if, you know, we were going through changing the chart of accounts, so that it is more transparent to people, because, I mean, as we well know, half of the time, the board, and even our own employees, who are trying to sort through things that have been done prior to them, don't know what it is. So if we don't know what it is, the public certainly will not know what it is, and/or have access to the resources to figure out what it is. So I have no problem with additional transparency. If that's a matter of breaking out numbers differently, that's fine, I mean, that's really the only difference, though. I mean, that's...
And the numbers are, they're in the budget, so I don't think it's not transparent. And I know that when I talk to people about when EnWAC comes up, and they say, my kid was in select soccer, nobody paid anything for that except me, it's all the different sports programs that their parents pay every penny. And so I think to go into something that we know is going to cost us be behind $19,000 versus we have an opportunity to make it even, almost, and I, I think that's the responsible place to go.
I'll tell you what, I'm a little bit disappointed in...
If I may.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. First off, Commissioner Pierce, were you finished?
I guess so.
That's why I stopped. Commissioner Pierce, do you have anything else you'd like to...
I'm fine.
If I interrupted, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
I've been sitting here for a while, and Commissioner Hofmeyer, do you mind if I interject?
Oh, you're good, then.
One thing, and we, when we're comparing sports, there's two things. A, I agree, travel, you know, and as, I'm not going to say a long-time swim parent, because I've only been doing it for six years, and hopefully I've got another six to go. But as a middle-of-the-road swim parent, as far as time length, one thing I don't mind is, I don't mind paying a little bit more. I have the benefit of being able to do so. And one thing I am concerned about, and I'll just bring it up, and one, before I go on, thank you very much for doing all this work, this is fantastic. 69% to 83%, and it's quickly realizable that 83% is a lot, is a big, big kick. And as you said, we quickly move to the right. 69 is still a decent kick. Like I said, I have the luxury of being able to do that, but I don't think there's, you know, some parents that may or may not be able to do that, which we've all realized, I think the board realizes as a whole is a concern. Also with that concern, one of the things we talk about when we compare sports is that... is that where these sports are played and where they take place. If, when I was a dual-sport parent, and we played soccer and swim, the city was kind enough to provide the soccer fields. And they striped them, and they put nets out, and it was great, you know? And that didn't cost me anything. You know, when Shane Levi plays baseball.
Monster baseball.
Monster baseball, man, Ken Griffey Jr. there, he's hitting the long ball, and he plays on city parks that are paid for by the taxpayer. And when kids who don't want to play an organized sport, but want to go skateboard, they do it right out our back door in a skate park that's paid for by taxpayers' dollars. So why we, as the stewards of that taxpayer money, do have a responsibility here. One thing we need to realize also is that, and you put it in here, the district and facility overhead is not included in this budget. And that's important to remember, because that number's not in this budget. And when we talk about that, we're not asking swim parents, and we're, you know, to pay for the facility where their children are swimming. Our overhead, actually, what we're paying for is the coach, and some of that's going to his benefits and everything else. Travel, retirement, social security, all those things. But it's important, when we talk about sports, is to remember that we provide an avenue for that sport to take place. And for all of us, no matter what side of the fence we're on when it comes to this, this is not a cheap facility to, or inexpensive facility to run. Good, better, and different, as you said earlier, we are left holding the pot that we have, and I don't think it was through malice or neglect, it is what it is. And we have thirty years without a capital improvement plan, and we show that. And because of that, and because of rising costs, we can't keep doing everything. I'll be honest, I look at the sixty-nine percent, and it causes me to gulp a little, and I'm like, wow. And I, my biggest concern is the Wigglefish. And Steve, I know yours is, what, a dollar fifty? You know, two dollars and fifty cents less than that, sixty-eight? Is that sixty-eight? I can't even read my own writing right now.
It's a dollar fifty.
It's a dollar fifty, okay, I was like, is that a nine or an eight? So, I mean, we're pretty spot on. The tough thing here is, we are going to have to increase our dues and take some type of action. We know that. We know, as we do that, we're also going to have to go hat in hand to the parents and say, hey, not only are we going to increase your dues, because we have to, to maintain that avenue for your child to recreate. We need you to help us make this a better place for them to participate in that sport. I think everybody recognizes the importance of this sport. Whether it's, you know, the fact that we live on an island, whether it's the team aspect, the social aspect, the discipline that the children learn, the physical, lifelong physical routine that hopefully they all develop. I mean, the community aspect, you listed, Ally listed, a list of adjectives that went to describe what this team brings to us. None of us here want to see that leave. But as we look at this, I think we need to all realize that it covers, it's going to take more than just this to keep this team here, so. I just wanted to say that, thank you very much. Further discussion?
You know, foolish, I guess, on my part. I actually thought tonight we were going to listen to parents. I thought there was going to be some exchange between them. Because when we talked about it, it was to meet with the N WAC parents. But the way it was set up in this special meeting, here we are in another meeting. And we really, except for the three, four, five minutes that Ally spoke, I don't feel like I've had a chance to really talk to the N WAC parents. And I thought that's what this was all about tonight, honestly. And I guess I was mistaken, but I really did think it was a chance to sit down with the N WAC parents. And once again, I mean, here we are, left with them out there and us up here. And I really, I honestly want to know what they think. You know, I want to hear more from them than less from us. And I don't know if that means, you know, tabling this discussion to another date, and setting up a workshop, or whatever. You know, I heard three or four minutes about a non-profit group. I want to know more about it, I want to know more about H2O, the difference between that and the plan for a parent-run N WAC booster club, and how is it going to work, what's your timeline, where are you at on this? You know, that's what I think we need at this point in time. And I don't know if you all thought that that's what tonight was going to be about, or if this is what you thought it was going to be. But I'm disappointed, actually.
Yeah, sorry. It actually was really clearly stated, because that's what I fought when we set the meeting up, and I said that at the meeting, I said, "Oh, we're going to do that," and I was told, "No, it's just going to be meetings." So it was, it was stated.
Okay, and like I said, it could be ignorance on my part, and I accept that. But I really do think that that would be beneficial to us as a board, to have an idea what their plan is, more than just three, four minutes.
I know the one thing that I might sit there and hear is, I'm not complimenting Steve either way. I don't know if it's possible and stuff, but we have a meeting, I believe, this weekend, who said, "If the board could be there on a listening capacity only, not discussion, not anything else," because I would love to see a workshop, more so than a meeting, where there could have been more interaction, you know, between the swim parents and us. Because I, when Steve made the motion for about the fifteen percent, the seven fifty and stuff, I got some reservations with that, but I mean, overall, I thought it was pretty good. But the biggest thing that I personally wanted, and I've talked to a couple swim parents, it's been very slim, I want to hear from them what they're doing, because it sounds like they got some great ideas that's coming. And I want to know what the plans that they have, so that way, when we sit there and make a decision, and we all know, there's not tons of money out there for everybody. You know, everybody has to make sacrifices, I don't care what program it's in, but everybody has to make sacrifices. But at the same aspect, I don't want to sit there and cut off this one program to where this one program also brings in other people. And just because I've never had a family member involved with it, doesn't mean it's not a good program, because it is. But I would like to know if there was a way that we could sit there and listen to them when they had another meeting, if we could be there again, just to listen, not to talk. I don't know if you're that's possible, Ms. Shaw.
I think it is.
May I ask, someone in the audience a question?
I'm going to, may I interrupt? And I'll get to you, well, I don't want to stop you. What I'm going to propose, though, is, N WAC has Saturday practices. And I know one of the concerns with, that has been voiced in public media is that we want to get this board to move on this topic before our time is out. And so if, November the fourteenth, because that would give parents enough time, Erica, would you be able to ask the coach? We wouldn't want staff to be there, you wouldn't have to be there, because you're looking at me like, oh...
That's the day that I train all my aquatic staff.
That's the day you train your aquatic staff? The cool part is, we have this huge part of the pool out here.
It's all first aid for you, but it's okay, I can move the mountain to that.
Okay, well, you know what? I don't think we'll be able to fit parents, if we have fifty, did I say forty-eight? Forty-eight current swimmers, and wouldn't it be great if all forty-eight parents were here? I think Ally would be thrilled, because she can't even get forty-eight to show up for a booster club meeting. If all forty-seven, because this guy won't, will have to be there either way, but could show up on that day, we might want to look at the senior center moving it out on deck, you know? That way, there's more room. But if we could do it Saturday after a Saturday practice, that would work, go ahead.
Right now, on the booster club for N WAC that you're, you know, you guys are in the process of organizing, do you have anyone that's the spokesperson, is that yourself?
It's Ally.
It's Ally.
Is there, I mean, do you have a second? Is there a, because I know you were involved with the H2O thought as well. I mean, is it, I mean, I don't know that we need to meet with all of the N WAC parents as much as, you know, if you have three or four, five people who are those spokespeople who can sit... Because what we don't want, honestly, I mean, in my opinion, is a session where it's like, "Oh, you guys," you know? It's got to be constructive, and it's got to be positive, and it's got to take us forward. And that's, and I don't know what you all think, but do you have three or four people, your core people who are going to take off this thing and run, who could put us together something, say, "Here's our plan, and here's where we want to be in a month, and three months, and six months, and here's how we're going to get there?" Can you put something together for us like that?
It may be difficult to come up with in two weeks, but we have essentially, as of Saturday, the vote is out, and we will stand that board. And once that board is stood up, we, that first meeting comes in minutes, and then we create a bylaw committee, to create the bylaws for what we're going to be as a booster club. And that goes to the state for the certification, so that we can then get our IRS paperwork pushed through. So that initial committee, for sure, that's going to stand out, and anybody who's going to come in for the bylaws would definitely be a group of people who you'd get good constructive criticism from publicly. But I think it would be a good group that we could look toward what the parents are interested in, in the parents, in the family's best interest of the team.
Do you all think that that would be more constructive than just getting fifty parents together? If it was your...
I think it definitely would be important to make sure that your inclusion of what the parents are thinking is important, because there's a lot, a lot of unknowns that you even mentioned tonight that I feel like I can answer.
Would you like to speak to some of the unknowns while we're still all here?
Yeah, I just believe that one of the things that we're looking at, whether or not we're going to be a greater than fifty thousand dollar a year fundraising group, or less than that, that starts to change our basis of what we have, that what we can ask, you know, the community for, and what kind of fundraisers we can do. So developing that will give you an idea already of what kind of income we could possibly create in the community. And then...
I didn't understand.
Ally, can you clarify that for me? You threw numbers around, and I need you to go slower for me, thanks.
We consider a five oh one C three, which we have to be because of the way that the pool is set up, because it's a county entity. We can't be a five oh one C seven. So five oh one C three allows us to fundraise, which affects benefits and the insurance coverage. But the way we process that paperwork has a dependency on how much we can raise per year, so we have to talk, we're talking about it as families, I feel like we can go a lot...
So put the cap on it?
So you can do a five, one oh two three, easy form on the internet. It's like a six-page document versus a twenty-six-page document that we force through. I think we have, that looks out a three-year window of whether or not you can make more than fifty thousand dollars a year for three years, I believe that we can. I've made twenty-six thousand dollars in a small fundraiser alone for an organization overseas as a small American entity in a small community. So I do believe that there's potential for us to raise more than fifty thousand a year as a N WAC booster. And so I think we need to push in that direction, but that needs a timeline for our paperwork to come back to start allowing that fundraising, definitely won't be until 2016 here.
Two things, I got to tighten my seatbelt here, because I almost fell out of my chair. And the second thing is, so what you're telling me is that the booster club, and I will beg the board's forgiveness, because as a swim parent, I should know this, but I have to make that separation also as a board member. So what you're telling me is you would like to see the booster club, and you believe that the booster club will be able to raise how much a year?
Over fifty thousand. I have no doubt that every team member can raise a thousand dollars annually, if we have fifty or more. And we already have more than fifty. So if you don't think you're tapping on raising a thousand dollars a year, I mean, I believe it, I believe it has. I believe the community has a bigger potential, though. And so I think that we're a very small entity on the chopping block versus what's really up there.
If I may, Ally, so your thought on where that money could be used to help the team?
I very carefully have combed through many booster team bylaws. And by bylaws, they're usually based on education, like CAMHS, and youth scrimmages, and working with the local community, and that's built on equipment, or it can be built on raising money to replace specific equipment that's team-oriented. It's never a facility cost, it could be toward coaching. We already look at numbers, when we're talking about seconded by members, begin to cap our abilities, because we can't have one coach.
So you're talking about paying for debt coaches?
So adding on other entities that aren't budgeted for, that would have to be team-oriented fundraising, those kind of things. So that's what you usually see in most bylaws that bypass. That is very limiting in a sense, though, because we can't just push money into the pool as a fundraising. It has to go to the team when you're raising it for the team, because it is a team booster. But if you have a community booster, that money can go anywhere into this facility, and you can do things like capo campaigns, which we could talk, we could talk millions of dollars in the future. Because it's a platform for endowments, it's a platform for big investors, and if you're nonprofit, they will, they will look to that versus, I know anybody who walked in the door and put money down for the pool, but they're not going to necessarily think in that direction, because it's a community, it's a county-based option. And I'm not discrediting the need for levies in the future. I believe that they're still going to be something that the community needs to own. But I think that we just have volunteer power right now to get that worked out. The 2011 levy didn't pass, and that 2011 mark time that you talk about this deficit of falling off is that, I believe, is that window, that where we're at, a deficit now versus moving forward in the future.
Where would you guess, or how long would you guess that it would take to have this set around? Six months?
I think to push through, I think it's, so I don't know for sure, because the IRS has a backlog. And so, if we push through the twenty-six-page document, the sooner the better. I think it'll be three, four months to get that. We were hoping for end of winter approval, so we could push for a really fun, like a polar dip for the community to kind of, here we are, we're in this new N WAC booster club, come out to our big event, and once we start pushing the paperwork through and get the credit from the state, we could start thinking about even talking at least about it, where we would be pushing it to the community, like pushing it to possible sponsors and things like that. There's a lot more that we could talk about, but I still have a lot of unknowns from the facility side of what's needed. So there's no doubt, I think, that families back all of this. We even back, I know we even backed a bit of the increase, because we know that we're not up there with all the other players in our region, but please don't look at the general population of Washington State's swim teams, because we don't fit in the Seattle and the shoreline and the Ever Bay. We fit with Anacortes TAC, and we fit with the D S T. And I look at their coaches, and I've looked at their models, and I have really good comparisons of that, and I'm happy to talk to that anytime. But I think we have a lot more potential in the community than this N WAC. And I know we can't, I know that the current N WAC will not be able to support it solely.
Something that Ally said that I think is worth, I mean, and it kind of stemmed off into another thought in my mind, was that the head coach is an employee of the pool, or of the Park and Rec District, rather, I'm sorry. And we have, we can, and we should be, using him in other things, other than just coaching. And that would be a second, possibly, for the aquatics director, or maybe at times, he has to be a guard, or whatever the, to look at using him in other places, because he is an employee of the Park and Rec District. And if we do those things, then we can actually justify some of the other expenses, you know, like insurance, and like all these other things that we're doing, right? And especially if the booster club is looking at using that money to pay for debt coaches, maybe an assistant coach later, and some of those things. Maybe we're looking at the head coaching position all wrong, that it's, he's not just an N WAC coach, he is an employee of the Park and Rec District, and we can actually use him to do other things, starting a, you know, a triathlon program, you know, for the community. And to where he's, you know, it's not just N WAC, he's doing a service for the Park and Rec District, and he's doing all the... Park and Rec District and he's doing all these other things. And I think if we do that, then we can begin to justify even more having that employee here and put the burden back on a nonprofit to pay for debt coaches. Because I know that's what, I know that's what Friends of the Pool did. I think until they got to the point to where now they finally just hired an assistant coach that is also an employee of the, the Doggo Pool, but they had to get to that point first. And, uh, anyway.
Well, the one thing you, you have to look at is, it's easy to sit there, and I know he does other stuff, I keep asking information for that all the time, but under the same aspect, the way his contract is written and was signed by the board limits him to what he can legally do.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think it would be great for him to do others, other things, but under the same aspect, until we review his contract and review his contract, you know, it's limited with what he can do and what we should expect of him to do. So we gotta keep that in perspective. Because I don't want to put him, I don't want to put us in any kind of legal binding in any way. And I know nobody else does.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But under the same aspect, we also, and y'all are really thinking outside the box as far as, you know, where to get money, how to bring stuff in, what to do. And that's what we up here, up here have been thinking too, is kind of outside the box. But that's where we have to continue going, is getting outside this box to sit there and start bringing everything together because, uh, my honest opinion, all the swim parents, swim team who vote for this levy, it's not gonna pass unless the community, the district that we support also passes it. And we have to sit there on the pier as far as the swim team, as far as, I'm gonna throw the dog park in there too.
Of course you do.
Baseball, all of us, in order, in order to get this levy to pass and for us to succeed, we all have to work together. And I think one of the biggest things that's gonna be a big benefit for everybody here is as soon as we finish up with the director, and I mean as far as the hiring part of it, as soon as we get somebody in place, there's a lot of people here, staff here that have a lot of knowledge. And I've said it before, you know, there are some great people here that do some great stuff, but under the same aspect, in order for everybody to achieve, to be very successful at everything, you can't be tasking people with 15,000 things to do. Because, I don't know about anybody else, but I'll tell you straight, if I get overtasked and it's going on for a long time, my job performance drops.
Sure.
So, you know, we have to work together, we have to get stuff going together. And, uh, as soon as we get a director in place, I think that is going to be a big benefit to get the Booster, us, everything going. And, you know, I just, I'm really excited to see everything going. And, you know, I just wanna, and maybe, I do thank everything that you did here, there's a lot of work you did here. And I thank all the influence you guys have. And again, I wouldn't like to sit there and, uh, and with 50 parents, I'm not, again, I'm not saying to speak, and I know whoever's controlling the meeting will kind of keep people where it's more constructive than verbally assaulting.
Thank you for our positive groups. Like who's positive?
Well, I know with 50 people.
May I ask, Ms. Paper, you have been involved in this for years. What is your take right now?
I, first, I, I think, um, I appreciate the effort and the, um, analysis to figure out some different solutions to, um, retaining, um, our team. That's very important to us and very important to the community. Um, I think it's great that you have Dawn and Ally here who, I mean, here's some passion and interest and knowledge and the wherewithal really to bring this Booster Club forward. And, but it's not gonna happen tonight. So this, um, these assumptions might, might, just if I might be candid, is that, you know, it's not gonna be in place in November. So how are, how are, you know, meeting these thresholds on a monthly basis are gonna be challenging? And the first year's gonna be unpredictable. It's gonna be a year of learning, a year of growing. But, but making assumptions, it's just, it's hard to, um, to determine what those are. I think when you look at the messaging, um, as Ally and Dawn have said, parents know what we're gonna have to pay for and we understand that. And I think you have the support, um, on the team because we want, that growth is there, so you wanna build on that growth. But I think trying to, the, the complexity of this modeling, whether it's 15% or whatever magic number it is, so that's very clear. And I, I have to say that the transparency on the travel, because I don't know, staying overnight at the Days Inn in February, the travel is really minimal. It, it, it's, it's not a high-cost item, but if it's separate and it's discreet to the public in that way, that that's what that money is for, I, I think, I think that I, I think also, for some reason, I found Dick Taylor's old resume. Jilly was, my daughter was on the selection committee. And, you know, he, one of his goals in moving here, at least that was what was on his resume, was to be part of a team and to grow a team and to be part of a stable team. So there's also, and from a retention standpoint, if that's your interest, is creating some stability for him. And I'm not, I haven't spoken to him about this, I'm just speaking, um, out of my heart, is that having one foot out the door or, or one foot out of, off the pool deck or whatever it might be, I mean, this man is here, I drop Jilly out at five in the morning and his truck is in the parking lot and when I pick her up at six, he is here. So that's, I recognize he's not here the whole day in between. He's here Saturday, he's with Jilly at seven and then on the deck with the other kids for returning. So there's a lot of hours being put in and invested. Um, and so I guess, you know, value what you have, value these great parents who are gonna help save this team, value, I think, what I think is a great coach. And you can also, as a board, say, you know what, we're, we're gonna be successful, we're partners for you in this endeavor, we're, we're with you, so.
Thank you very much.
And just for the record, if I may, um, that Carolyn brings the perspective of a very tenured is the word I'm looking for, swim parent who is on her second daughter in the swim program. So, um, did I get that correct?
It, it's just this one.
Just this one?
She's just been here a long time.
She's been here a long time. I tried to use tenured, ma'am, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you all for your input. Well, you know, we, yo, I am so sorry, thank you very much. Yes, I, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, um, thank you. Um, Ally, I don't know if you're aware of this, but, um, first of all, Ally and I have known each other for a long time, actually. Um, but I don't know that you, if you're aware that, um, they've been looking for, hoping, hoping, we all have been hoping for someone, um, to do, to, to fill this role for a long time. And it's been talked about and it's been, and it's been thrown around and there, and there are reasons why it ebbed and flowed, but, um, the minute that I heard your name, because I didn't know, um, I, I didn't know the girls were on the team, but the minute that I heard your name, I knew that they were in good hands. Um, and I mean that sincerely, because what I know of you is that you are thorough, you are passionate, um, you are determined, um, you're really smart. Unfortunately, I don't really know you, Dawn, so please don't take this personally, but, but it's just, I, I mean, it, it gave me a lot of confidence, um, not only in us all moving forward together, but the, the potential success of, of the Booster Club itself. Um, and it made me really excited. Um, I'm not surprised, but I'm delighted with the amount of information that you came with, right? I'm not surprised, but I, but truly, in the, in the short amount of time, um, yeah, that's pretty remarkable. Um, and so I just, I'm, I, I, I agree with the partnership part of it. I absolutely, positively do. Um, I don't know if, if everyone who came here is aware that this is really a different tenor than has, has been discussed in this same room over the past couple of years. Um, we are really trying to find a way to have the program succeed and have the facility thrive, um, and, and do both. Um, the idea is for it not to be an either or, right? That's, that's the goal. Um, and I think we're all in that because of course you can have the most successful, successful Booster Club in the world, but if we can't maintain the facility, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not proselytizing about anything, but if we can't maintain the facility, then it's for naught. Um, so I, I mean, I appreciate and I look forward to the opportunity to partner together to get us where we need to be for the long term. Um, you brought up some great things that have also been batted around in terms of, uh, a Friends of the Pool. Um, we talked about this a little bit before the meeting and, and that certainly is, um, I, I think there are lots of great things and that you've already looked into and I think we would love to hear about those. I would just caution us to, to focus on kind of this group right now because it's, otherwise if we focus on both, and I'm not, I know you're not saying that, and, and that you're not signing up for it, you're simply making a recommendation, I think is wonderful. But I think we'd like to see how things work with, with this and this only, just meaning, um, scope creep, right? That we don't, that we don't let our scope creep. Um, but it really, it is very exciting. So thank you. Really, thank you ladies, very, very much. Sincerely.
I would like to, um...
Yeah, I am done, thank you.
I'd like to say this, uh, first off, thank, thank all three of you, um, for all the work. Carolyn, thank you for your countless dedication to this district and to the team. Um, what I heard tonight was encouraging. I will say this, I know we talked about another meeting, um, unless there's a motion for another meeting, I'm gonna say this, we have a meeting in less than five days or in five days to talk about the budget. Um, and as much as we'd like to research this to death and we see that happen on Capitol Hill and in Olympia all the time, um, we, we, we need to move forward in some way, whether it's tonight or if it's Thursday meeting, I, I, that is up to you all. Um, but I would say we cannot responsibly go into a budget meeting without some action forward. Um, I think we've heard that the team, parents, understand that they're gonna have to be asked to carry more, um, as far as dues go in the future. I think it is up to us to put our big boys and girl pants on tonight and figure out what is that way forward before we go into a budget meeting, because we can't do one without the other. Um, and, and that's what we are tasked to do. And so I, I think tonight, we, we need to take action. Good, bad, or indifferent, I can't start that action. Um, if we decide not to, that's the way we...
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we increase NWA dues by 15% and that it be, uh, 15% and that we, we round it off to the nearest dollar to include the Masters program. And then a $7.50 per month charge, uh, for each child, excluding, excluding Masters, and be collected for the sole purpose of, to cover the travel expenses of the coach. So, you know, yeah. Did we write it out?
I think we're getting it written out right now. So I have a motion to increase the dues to 15%, round it to the nearest dollar.
Include Masters.
Including Masters, plus $7.50 a child per month, not to include Masters, for covering travel.
To cover the travel expenses.
To cover the travel expenses. Do I have a second?
I will second that for discussion.
We have a second, discussion.
The one thing that I would like to sit there and say as far as, with the motion and stuff, is, and I know I can amend it or anything like that, but just, uh, I would feel a little bit better as if the motion was more toward, rather than to the nearest dollar, to, to the highest dollar. So it was 49, or $17?
I will amend this motion.
It would go to $18.
I will amend the motion towards 15% rounded up to the nearest dollar.
The highest.
To the highest dollar, my, my, yeah, to the highest dollar.
Yeah, so it was $17.01, it would go to $18.
Gotcha.
Yes.
And I will second that.
So you have an amended motion now and a second. And I'm gonna pause for a minute.
Okay, got it.
Further discussion.
Um, do, so question about the travel fee, do, do all kids travel?
Do all children travel?
To meets?
No. We don't always have all children travel. Go ahead.
That would be part of them being on the team and that, you know, because they may not travel to a swim meet this month.
Also encourage more travel too.
Yes, it would. It is a competitive swim team.
It, it is, and, um, yes, it is. And I, I guess, I wonder, I just wonder whether that would sit well with people whose kids didn't travel to be paying a travel fee. Uh, maybe that's not an issue, but, um, if, if I were in their shoes and I had kids who were not travelers, I would wonder why I was paying that. That's, that's me.
Well, the one thing with me that I would sit there and say on that there is, uh, the travel is not for the kid to go, it's to pay for the coach.
Understand.
So, you know, if you're supporting your coach, you should be supporting the travel in order for him to have more experience. That's all I wanna say with that.
Yeah. Further discussion.
Sorry, I'm just doing some math here.
Do I need to wait?
Um, if there's more, if there's no more discussion, if you...
But this is gonna be 7.50 per child, there's no, if you have two kids in the same family, there's gonna be a cut?
I would like to amend this motion that it be for 11 months.
Oh, we did say that, okay.
Excluding the month of August.
Okay.
So, okay, 7.50 per child per 11 months.
I'll second that.
Further discussion.
I'm still doing math, if you don't mind, I mean, if you...
If you're asking for a continuance, we can do that.
I am, for just a moment.
Okay.
Thank you, I apologize.
We're gonna, we're gonna take a, uh, three-minute recess so that, uh, commissioners can step out. So we're gonna start a recess at, uh, 6:58, we'll come back at 7:01.
Okay, thank you, sorry. I don't, I don't mean to be the watch and paint dry. We'll feel much better.
Not joking. Back with time here.
All right, we're gonna call the meeting back to order at, after a brief recess. So further discussion.
Time.
Oh. It is 7:02.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the motion for one thing. Uh, concerning the travel expenses, that a family, uh, would, um, that the second child and any child after that, it would, it would be a maximum of, uh, well, I would like to amend the motion that a family, the, the most a family would spend in, in travel expenses would be $12.50.
Okay. $12.50 total per family.
Per family, a maximum.
Okay.
And this thought is that that would, if, if a family had two or three kids, that it doesn't make it so costly that there's no way that they could participate.
All right. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Are you ready?
Oh, sure.
No further comments?
Wait a minute, let me, can I ask the staff a question?
Yes, please.
How many, are most of the people in the swim program singletons or are maybe a quarter additional? I'm just wondering how much of an impact that would have on the, you know, $4,000 travel fee that we were anticipating.
She's starting notes of parent check.
Ally, do you have a number?
Third line is the current, um, family membership and we have 48 team members as of last season, that will be out Sunday. So just, so...
Okay, so there's only, there's only like 10?
There's, there's a handful where it's like siblings, I don't think we have any, but it's more than two.
Okay, that doesn't sound like very much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
Aye, nay.
Nay.
Okay, roll call vote. Um, Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Singleton?
Nay.
Commissioner Pierce?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Nay.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes.
I would like to make a motion to a adjournment.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Motion passes unanimously.